Excuse me. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this open public meeting was provided in the notice of January 2020. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, sent to tap into Nutley, advertised in the Nutley Sun on February 6th, 2020, and posted on the district website. A revised meeting notice was sent out on July 23rd, 2020, advertising that this meeting was a virtual online meeting. Can we have the flag salute, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Condesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Here.
Mr. De Mayo?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mrs. Quirk?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mr. Scolera?
Here.
Ms. Arum?
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Here. Thank you. Are there any correspondents tonight? Okay, I need an approval of the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
All right, it was motion by Erica, second by Fred, or vice versa. Thank you. I would remind everybody when you're not speaking to put your microphone on mute as much as you can. It would help us all. Is the superintendent with us yet? Superintendent's report? All right, we'll skip that and get back to it if we can. Mr. De Veeze?
Yes. My, my, uh, all of my agenda items are in print. I want to thank everyone for their continued support and your efforts in your committee meetings each month. Makes our job easier. Items 11 and 12, special thanks to Mike Perigi and Tim Caster, 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 excuse me, for going over and above and, uh, and, and having vendors come and give us the best pricing for different pieces of equipment that we're on, uh, on, uh, on, out and looking for. And just another example of going over and above, I tasked both of them with the middle school clock, trying to get that up and running as fast as possible and cleaned. And not only did they find a vendor, they, they went and found a second vendor, and that vendor will start this week. And hopefully within the next week or two, that clock will be cleaned and operating and lit. So, uh, special thanks to those two gentlemen. And it just goes for, uh, for an example of just the effort from everybody in district on what they're doing. So I just wanted to recognize everybody on a job well done. Thank you.
And thank you to you and your team for what's, what's been transpiring lately between the purchase of equipment, uh, the renovation of the clock and everything else that's been going on in district. Certainly academically and, and now maintenance wise, it's a pleasure to see this stuff moving forward. Thank you and your team. Mr. Perigi, are you with, Mr. Perigi, are you with us?
Yes, I am, Charlie.
Okay. Take a presentation, please. Thank you again for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Ready. Sorry, Charlie. Yep, the turf is installed in the oval, the lines and logos are being sewn as of today. The turf is on schedule to be completed on time the end of the month. I have a quote for the John Walker Middle School Needlepoint bipolarization. Uh, I only did one school at this time. I have a general idea of the cost of the district. The trailers were completed and the air sampling came back negative at Washington Trailers. The emergency daycare started at Washington and everything is going as planned on the custodial and maintenance end. The 20 tents were delivered and are to each school when needed for our lunch programs or any other needs that arise. We also had some fence work done. Spring garden fence reinstalled due to the trailer renovation. Fence repaired from storm damage at Spring Garden, Washington. We had a new fence installed along the ball field. The TCU units on each side for a safer environment for the kids when they're outside playing. New fence installed by the main parking lot, again, in the front where they play uh, at recess as the balls were going into the street. And we had a temporary fence there for quite a while. That's been replaced. We also had the fence relocated by the fire hydrant. Uh, fence repaired on Bullfield due to storm. Uh, John Walker gate was repaired. Uh, we also have a, an equipment demo at the high school on Friday. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Perigi. I see Dr. Glazer's on board now?
Yes.
I am. I'm sorry I had a difficult time logging in, but I do want to remind you that we have a presentation this evening. We have Joe Capello on the meeting to share with us his, his twice annual um, report on our harassment, intimidation and bullying. And this, this, um, this meetings talk about our scores. So at this time, I'd actually like to introduce Joe Capello. Thank you always, um, for, for not just your hard work, but I'm not sure that people know that Joe also trains the staff. Um, he facilitated a training for about 25 of us on Friday. You really always go above and beyond to make sure that our culture and climate is, is there. So thank you for that.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm not sure if Mr. V Meister is available. I do have a presentation. Thank you very much.
Always available.
Yeah. That's for sure. Um, so this evening's presentation, we conduct it once a year. Um, the biannual presentation is usually conducted usually in November, um, in March, in the fall and the spring. This presentation is the, is the self-assessment that each anti-bullying specialist with their school safety team has to conduct an evaluation of its implementation of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Ian, please. Thank you. So with this evaluation, um, the state provides us with a 41-page rubric, and the rubric contains eight core elements, and they have indicators. And each, each school has to rate their compliance, their, um, implementation, how they implement the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. And as you could see from the rating, three is exceed requirements, whereas zero is the not, does not meet the requirements at all. Um, and throughout the, throughout the course of the year, um, each school and each anti-bullying specialist has to maintain documentation to substantiate their ratings. Ian, please. Just to go over each core element. In core element one, which focuses on HIB, which stands for harassment, intimidation, bullying, programs, approaches and initiatives. Um, are we establishing, are we implementing, are we assessing our programs that address and prevent bullying? Um, are the school safety teams, which he also calls school climate team, are they identifying and addressing patterns of HIB in their school to prevent, um, any HIB and as well as to create a safe school climate? Um, that is the nature of the, of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, is to create a safe school climate as well as to investigate any alleged incidents of bullying. Um, the second indicator, are we training our staff on the HIB policy? Are we discussing it with students? So not only training the, the staff, but are we also training our students about what it is, what it is and what it isn't? Um, and the third core element is how are we instructing as well staff in other, other areas of instruction, suicide prevention? Um, this month is actually Suicide Prevention Month. Um, once again, are we providing instruction? Um, are we providing the anti-bullying specialists with, um, opportunities to go on in-service trainings? Um, as well as the school safety team meeting, uh, the school safety team? Are we addressing and educating our school leaders? And as Dr. Glazer alluded to, one of the things we're already doing this year is we already, we conducted a training, a two-hour training this past Friday. Ian, please. Thank you. Um, the fourth core element focuses on curriculum instruction, is our instruction according to the New Jersey Student Learning, Learning Standards. Are we observing the Week of Respect, which is the first, the first full week of every October? Um, the fifth element, do we have an anti-bullying coordinator, which is me? Do we have an anti-bullying specialist at each school? Is our school safety team, school safety team, school climate team, are they meeting at minimum of twice per year? The six, uh, the sixth core, core element, excuse me, um, are we verbally reporting HIB on the same, same day it was witnessed? What are the procedures? Are we providing a written report within two school days? Ian, please. Thank you. Regarding our investigation procedures, like I said, it seemed like the first couple of core elements focused on school climate, and now we're getting more involved into the HIB investigations. Are we notifying parents immediately when there is an investigation? Or is the, is the investigation being completed within 10 school days as mandated by the law? Are we preparing a written report, a summary of the, of our findings? And are those findings going to Dr. Glazer within two school days of them being completed? The final core element focuses on, um, once again, procedures that the staff members know what to do to verbally and, and to verbally and to write down and submit a report to the, um, to the school leader, to the, to the principal or the principal's designated, like a vice principal. Are we posting our grades on the school homepage as well? Ian, please. Thank you. Um, so as you could see, the top row is each core element, and it provides a list of what are the maximum scores. As you could see, um, our numbers are in the 70 from this anti-bullying specialist. Our numbers, um, I, I feel it, it represents how hard our anti-bullying specialists at each school as well as how our school safety teams are working. Um, each school, um, either graded themselves at they met expectations or exceeded expectations. Uh, one of the things that we are constantly doing, uh, core element number one, you constantly have to be reevaluating and coming up with different programs. There is, as I always say at every time I'm presenting, there is never a cookie cutter approach. Um, especially in these times with the virtual learning, um, we're going to have to change things up because we're going to be educating our students virtually. Um, Ian, please. Thank you. Um, in reviewing our policy procedures and reassessing, um, as I said, core element number one, which is vital, is constantly, what are we doing? How are we changing our programs and approaches? Um, we have to change them because there could be different patterns at each school. So they're constantly going to have to change. Um, I'm a big proponent of core element number three, constantly changing, um, constantly instructing our staff. Um, Mrs., um, Mrs. Girkins, as well as Ms. Vidello, Ms. Girkins, the, um, the school counseling department head, as well as Mrs. Vidello, who works in the Department of Special Services, um, putting together many programs this year for the staff. Uh, so actually last week I conducted, all the schools conducted a training on suicide prevention. Um, and as Dr. Glazer just spoke about, um, the district is utilizing, it's, it's new. Um, the program isn't new, but, um, we're implementing a software program that manages all, all HIB documentation of, to ensure our compliance with the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights with, because there are many timelines that we have to meet. Um, it, it keeps us in compliance as well as providing correspondence, uh, preparing reports for the Board of Ed, as well as providing and, and developing letters for parents after each investigation when reports are presented to the board. Ian, please. Um, once the grades are approved, um, Dr. Glazer then um, certifies them through, uh, the, the New Jersey Department of Ed Home Room. She certifies them. There's a statement of insurances which says that our board did approve them with, which would be this evening's, um, the date of today's meeting. Ian, please. Thank you. Um, so after this meeting, usually the, the, the grades, it's usually eight to nine months where the Department of Ed reviews the grades. Um, in the last few years, we usually receive the grades back, the official grades, usually in June. Once those grades, we receive those grades, they'll be posted to our district website. Ian? And as you could see, this is the, the official grade from 2018, 2019. I presented these grades, I believe it was last August. Um, if you look, I believe it's, I don't have my glasses on, it's too small, but the grades were released on June 3rd and they were posted to our website on June 11th. So there is some time that, especially now, the ones that I presented this evening, that hopefully we'll have them back sooner. Um, but usually probably by next June, we will receive our official grades. And, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you as usual, Mr. Capello. Um, I, we, we all appreciate the work that your team does throughout the district. I know it's a difficult time and, um, you've always been there for us and your team doing outstanding job. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capello. And now, Kaczynski, if I may, um, now I go on to my report. Um, so today we begin Day 10, uh, virtual instruction of the 2021, um, school year. So far, the feedback we received, um, regarding the delivery of instructions been very positive. As we promised, it looks very different than it looked from March to June. Uh, there's been a concerted effort, not just by our curriculum team, but by our principals, coordinators, our, um, classroom teachers. And they are really the ones that are, they're pulling the weight and making that lift um, to have our virtual instruction be robust and comprehensive. Um, I would tell you that in addition, the feedback that we're receiving on the increased social emotional learning support has been very positive. Um, it's been challenging for our students. We're heading into seven months of this pandemic and, um, that social emotional component has become even more critical. People, um, students particularly feel isolated. There's a lot of frustration. Um, and we've tried very hard, um, not just with support from our counseling offices and our teachers, but, um, as we reported at the last meeting, as we were getting ready, we did the meeting greets with the kindergarten. We are planning, um, some other, um, types of ways to get students um, in person, socially distanced, following all the health and safety guidelines, um, to try and mitigate some of that, um, social emotional pressure. We do have back-to-school nights, um, at the elementary level next week. They will be virtual. There was not a way, um, to bring that many people in the building. The governor still has not changed the, the indoor capacity requirements. But again, we, we're endeavoring to find ways to bring people together. The middle school and high school back-to-school night information will also be virtual, and that'll be released October 1st. Um, I want to say that, um, I'm pretty proud of, again, not just all of our staff, but our volunteers from Nutley Family Service Bureau and throughout the community have continued to come every Tuesday and Friday to make sure that we are feeding every child in the community under the age of 18. We're still feeding over 200 families a week, and that's in addition to the breakfast and lunch we're providing at Washington School for those students that are participating in the Emergency Child Care Program. Um, since our last meeting, we were able to, um, get that up and running. Again, just a monumental effort by, um, Janine Loconsolo, Kent Benya, uh, Maria Castranova, uh, Christine Vidello, Doug Jones. It, it has, um, just been tremendous. And I, I couldn't ask for better people to be working with those students one-on-one, day in and day out. I will say that, um, we, we started the program with 10 students and next Monday, as we begin the third week of the program, we'll have 18 students. Um, very, very many less than, um, the need that was communicated or that we anticipated, but we're thrilled that we'll be able to help those students and those families that, that are in need. Um, because our next meeting isn't until October 26th, I do want to just talk about a couple of other things um, along the same lines as virtual learning and, and some of the things, um, that we're doing. In addition, um, to the, to the instruction and trying to bring people in person, um, feeding people, devices and the internet are a huge part of our program, as you can well imagine. Um, we, we have been able to, uh, make sure that every family has a device for their child to log on and internet. In some families, we know that it's a tremendous challenge to share devices, to not have a Chromebook, to have to learn how to log on with an iPad or, or some other device. Um, and our technology team is working tirelessly to make sure that everybody is able to access their education. On September 9th, um, families received a letter, um, that, um, detailed the Chromebook loaner request. Um, if you still do not have a device, if your sharing of a device is a challenge, there was a form in that letter, um, that you were asked to fill out so we could provide you with either a temporary emergency device um, or some other, um, device for you to use while we're waiting to receive the more than 1,000 Chromebooks that are on order. Um, Nutley, like every other community in the state and in the country and globally, is, um, suffering from that supply chain, um, due to the pandemic. And every day, we expect those Chromebooks to come. And in the meantime, we have, um, and I, when I say we, I mean our technology team because they're tireless, um, have broken apart the, the carts and used our iPads and other devices, again, to make sure that every child um, is able, able to access their virtual learning. Um, we do still have a dedicated webpage, Virtual Learning, and there are two L's, virtual and learning, um, at nutleyschools.org, where if you do need technical support, if you need, um, additional help, they will respond to you, perhaps not the same day, but within 24 to 48 hours. If you are finding that you need a device, again, you do need to fill out, um, the Google form. And if you need, um, another access to that, you can also get that through the virtual learning site. Finally, I want to talk about, um, our return to school. Um, in our emergency plan, um, where we started remote, you might remember that, um, the heat index was our big consideration, the ventilation and being able to access enough classrooms to be able to bring students back into the school, even in a hybrid way. Um, although the temperatures have been cool the last couple of days, they are going back up in the next few days. But we are still committed, um, as we said in our plan, to bringing our youngest and most fragile learners back by October 15th. That would be our pre-K, kindergarten, English language learning and special education self-contained students. And then, um, as we said, we would follow, um, by grade level span, starting at elementary for, after that. After those early learners transition into school, many of them have never even been to school before, have never participated in a, um, emergency drill. After we transition them in, we'll start with the next grade levels and work our way up until we have returned to school, um, at least in a hybrid way, um, as soon as possible. And when I say that, um, please remember that's if we're permitted to do so based on the health and safety guidelines. Um, along those guidelines, thank you to all of the families that have continued to fill out our daily screening tool. It does make a difference to our Department of Health as they're tracking positivity rates. Um, the numbers have gone up in Nutley as well as everywhere else. That's not due to the schools. That's due mostly to people, um, outside of the schools. We, um, had a glitch with real time. Most of you know, um, if you selected the virtual option, you were not able to access the screening tool, even though we, we did ask you to complete that. As of today, real time has reinstated our settings. And starting tomorrow, everybody will be able to, um, access that screening tool. And we expect that everybody will complete that tool on a daily basis. Um, if you don't, I know that you've already received calls from the nurses or a robo-call reminding you to do that, um, every single day, please. Um, board members, I, I know that, um, you probably have not been called if you have not completed that. But the same way that we're looking to return to the buildings in October, um, I would hope that you'll consider perhaps our next board meeting, all of us together. The public would still have to be virtual unless those capacity rules change. Um, but in that way, you'd also need to be doing the daily screening tool. And I'll remind everybody, it would be with masks, hand washing and appropriate social distancing. Um, I'm not sure. I know it's a lot of information. Um, we, we've covered some of it in committee. A lot of it, um, is a repetition from brief. But if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to, to take those questions, board members.
I have a question. Mr. President? Sorry. Um, I have a question. It will, and, uh, when it came to Mr. Capello's presentation, my question was about when we can do training for our summer staff? If we have an extensive, uh, staff that comes in the summer? Because I know he just did a training for the, for those who started in September. So does he have another training when, in June or July for them? Or do they just wait until September?
No, no, we don't wait. I don't know if Mr. Capello's still on the meeting, but as new staff are hired, we do that training. We also do the security training on an ongoing basis. We don't wait. Everybody, um, is required to get that training. And again, if Mr. Capello's on the call, um, he can tell you, we, as, as every new agenda comes, we work on that with, um, um, webinars and, and in-person training.
Mr. Capello is here.
Okay, good.
Yes, we try to, um,
There you go.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, we try, we try to train staff. I, I am conducting new staff trainings, um, through June. Um, and a lot of times, um, we get majority of our new staff in, in August too, before the school year starts. Um, and that is usually done probably like the third week in August, um, before the school year starts. Mrs. Quirk, and then now I continue to do, um, I have training. I, I've been putting the list together. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, my camera wasn't on. I apologize. Um, I, I'm putting my new list together to, to get everyone trained. Majority of people have been trained. Um, it's just a few people here that sometimes can be very tricky to get to them and get everyone's schedule together. But yes, I'm hoping by the end of this month, um, people who are trained, especially like they're trained on, on a lot of new hires were, um, hired on August 31st. We have to get a whole bunch of those people as well. And then today's new staff. I've already have a list of, of all the new staff today. I reviewed this morning, the personnel list from today.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Capello. And I just, and I just had one question, Mr. President. Um, in regards to the social and emotional program that we have, I know that we wanted the teachers to do it, but I know that the teachers are doing as much as they can. Can the guidance counselors step in? Would we see that as, as a possibility for the guidance counselors to step in and teach that? Because that is their expertise. I'm just throwing this out there in terms of a...
If you remember on the schedule, there is that block where our guidance counselors are part of the program. Um, but honestly, that daily check-in is required by the Department of Education and that's what we're doing during our morning meeting. I know Janine's on the call and she might be able to, to give a little bit of a call. Okay.
Mr. Loconsolo, are you with us?
I don't know what you're saying.
I am, I'm sorry. I'm having trouble unmuting. I'm here.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Um, yeah, Mrs. Quirk, a lot of what we're, um, seeing as far Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Yeah, Mrs. Quirk, a lot of what we're seeing as far as best practice within the Health and Wellness Committee, when we were reviewing the social emotional programs, was around how to ingrain and embed that social emotional framework into all aspects of the curriculum and school community. So a lot of what we're hearing on the implementation end is that having the classroom teachers buy into that language, so it becomes part of their everyday practice, is really important. So districts are moving in the direction of having that embedded within the classroom teacher's instruction and so that it's not a standalone that once a week the counselor comes in and this is when we talk about social emotional learning. Instead, it's, this is the time when my teacher maybe addresses it explicitly, but throughout the day, the teacher's revisiting it throughout some of the language that she may be using or he may be using academically, he or she may touch on it. So that's the short answer of it would be that a lot of the best practice is saying that the classroom teacher embedding it in is more effective than just the once a week with the counselor.
Mr. President?
Hold on, hold on, just let me finish with Terry Quirk, okay?
Actually, Mr. President, I actually just want to jump in on what Terry brought up.
Okay.
Okay, just sticking with the same topic. So I understand, are we, are we then obviously going to be training our teachers? So that it's going to be a consistent message, a consistent, you know, program with the social emotional? Or is each teacher going to be doing their own thing?
So as part of the Caring Kids, Caring Community Social Emotional Program, we do have complimentary professional learning built in. And we're hoping to use our October half-day PD to start that conversation with the elementary teachers. So there is, there'll be consistent materials, so they each have manuals and resources that go along with it, with scripted lessons to walk them through, and then there is the company's PD as well.
Okay, and that's going to start when, in October?
We're looking right now at the October 8th or 9th PD day as a possibility that that early dismissal that's built into the schedule may be using some of that time to meet with the elementary teachers.
And that's all elementary teachers on that day, or you're going to start on that day? And then continue, you know, continue with the training?
I think the Health and Wellness Committee, I don't know if they have an exact schedule yet for that day, but we're thinking that the initial PD through the company is 90 minutes. So it may be that we cycle a K2 and a 3.5 through that 90 minutes that day and then it becomes kind of an ongoing from there.
So how long do you envision this training to occur?
Well, the initial, the initial 90 minutes is through the publisher of the actual program. And then the ongoing may be part of our bi-weekly elementary meetings or it may be done by grade level, depending on what the committee decides how much support teachers need for that.
What I'm asking is, are you going to, are you going to be able to do the entire teaching staff in that one 90-minute session, or is that just going to be, like you said, two grade levels? And then you're going to have to continue with additional training on additional days? So how long do you envision that whole training taking place?
So I think I'm envisioning that on that October date, it would be a 90 minutes for grades K through 2 and possibly then the 90 minutes for 3 through 6. So kind of grade level bands for that 90 minutes and then from there, more specific grade level meetings. But again, I would want to defer to the Health and Wellness Committee because again, I'm a member of that committee, but I would want to hear from them exactly the way they want to roll it out as well. So that's kind of still being developed.
Okay, I just, you know, I want to echo Terry's concern with, you know, obviously making sure that, you know, the teachers are trained in this area, that they're going to be provided with the material so that we're going to be giving a consistent message out to all of the students.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would think that's what we're looking for is continuity between all of the, all of the teaching staff and what our students receive.
Just to piggyback a little bit off of that, I also agree. Even if it's just some basic social emotional training, I think that by that time, we're already going to be another three weeks, almost three plus weeks into it to make sure that everybody has some kind of basic, whether it's 90 minutes, as long as we get to everybody in those days. Because if we just keep progressing it, it could be, we could be back in school before they have the tools they need to make sure they could deal with it virtually.
Absolutely, and I think we are envisioning this as kind of the pilot year of this. So the expectation is going to be that teachers try out these lessons, but we understand that given some of the limitations, we may not be doing it with complete fidelity in 100% implementation until next year. So we're going to work with teachers to be flexible with that because we know they have a lot on their plates.
Thank you. Mrs. Quirk, Sal, Erica, are you okay right now?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have, I have a few questions if we're done with this topic that I'd like to just ask Dr. Glazer.
Sure.
Dr. Glazer, you brought up the technology email. And I know I'm not alone in getting, you know, emails and phone calls. If a parent sends an email to that website, to that email address for the technology, whether it's a Chromebook or an issue, an issue with, you know, connectivity or an issue with any, any technology piece that they have, and they don't get a response, is there another avenue for those parents to be able to contact someone else?
Well, it is our technology team that's handling those responses. And there are two different avenues. There's the Google form to receive a device. And then there's the Virtual Learning at nutleyschools.org site for tech support. As far as connectivity goes, they really aren't going to be able to help you beyond what went out in that September 9th letter. There is not anything that the district can handle as far as your home wifi.
It may not be, it may not be, it may not be a connectivity issue that has anything to do with somebody's home wifi. It could be an issue with, with an issue with the Chromebook that they have.
So that is that virtual, that is that virtual learning at nutleyschools.org. It is manned by our technology team and Karen Greco. I know Karen is on the call. I see Ian is on the call. I don't know who else is on the call, but perhaps one of them can tell you what, if there's a different avenue than what we've done so far.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah, just to speak to what Sal says, sometimes the responses aren't in 24 to 48 hours. So if there's not, I guess the question is, what is there, what can they do? If they feel like they're not getting a response for whatever reason, I know they're inundated.
I'm deferring to Ian and to Karen since I don't see Jess on the call. So maybe I'm going to answer for you.
We can let them answer a little more chat. My other question is, and I come from the technology world, if the Chromebook's not working for them to send a message and that they have a problem, how else would they reach them? So I think we have to have a back, just adding to everyone going on, I think there has to be a backup method.
Let Ian come on and answer that, okay, Ian?
I can answer that last question, Fred. You can send the email, you could send the email from any device. You don't have to send the email from your Chromebook. You can send it from a smartphone, from, you know, from anything. So that's, that's the first thing. The email does not have to come from the Chromebook. You can just simply, you know, do it from your phone. I know Ian's on, so he, the technology team is manning that line really closely. I can tell you that since school opened up, there are probably, you know, 150 emails coming through a day, 200, where everybody's trying to get through them really quickly. Some are quick fixes and some take a little more time. So everybody's working really hard to get through those as quickly as possible.
Hey Karen?
Yeah.
Karen? Is there, is there a way to, is there a way to at least send an automatic reply back to the parent saying, "We received your email, we're looking, you know, we're, we're looking into it or we're, we're working on it. We'll get back to you shortly." At least there's, you know, it's, you send out a, right now, it seems like sometimes you could send out an email, maybe not get a response for, for days or some people may not get a response, you know, for a long period of time. So maybe we can look at sending out like an auto, auto message, at least acknowledging that we received your email and we will be reaching out to you shortly, something to at least let them know that they, you know, it got to somebody.
Okay, yeah, Ian and I.
Actually, our technical lead, her name is Scartola, had given us a proposal for that, which David, I'll be talking to you about tomorrow morning, to have actually more automatic tracking on that done. We've gone from, of course, handling a small number of requests to the hundreds today Karen was mentioning. So it makes more sense at this point to actually put it in a proper ticket tracking system, which we have a proposal for. But there should not be multiple day lag on this. If somebody's not getting a response for a message within 24 to 48 hours, let me know. Everybody should be getting a response, even if it's a request for additional information.
So should we direct them, if they're not getting a response, to reach out to, is there another person? Or should they reach out to their board rep and then we could then forward the email to you? Just so in case they are getting lost in translation that happens, in case they're not putting the two L's. There's things that are going to happen where sometimes the email's not going to go through, just to make sure that people don't feel like days are going by and being unanswered. I think that's more.
What has worked out fairly well for anyone who was having trouble, and yes, it was frequently spelling errors on virtual learning, was reaching out to the building principals who then forwarded the virtual learning address.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Ian. Sal, are you?
Yeah, I have one more, one more question for Dr. Glazer. It's regarding the emergency daycare. Dr. Glazer, I know you said we had only 10 students, possibly a little more after, after this week. But how many, how many total applications did we receive?
How many applications for children to participate?
Yes.
So 18 is what we'll have on Monday. We didn't turn any children away.
So we received only 18 applications so far and 18 applications were approved for the daycare.
Correct. Everybody that we've been able to verify, which is everybody that's applied, is participating in the program.
So we haven't received, beyond the 18, that's, that's all we received, there's 18 applications and 18.
Includes, includes the students that are starting next week.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question off that? Is that including all the requests we received? Or is there a disparity in that number?
We, every person that made a request received the information back, wrote back, forwarded an email to every person that inquired, telling them what they needed to do. It was a letter from their employer on letterhead stating that they were required to return to work, their days of return to work. Not all of those 18 children participate five days a week. Some of their parents don't work in, you know, in their business five days a week. But we, we accommodated what was required. We, again, that it's everybody that has, has needed to take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Dr. Glazer, we originally got the petition on that. Wasn't like 1,000 people that thought they would be using this?
I don't know if it was quite that many, but we were, we were told that there were hundreds of people. We hired staff to be able to accommodate several hundred people. And needless to say, you know, that hasn't been the need so far. So, you know, we were prepared and that need hasn't arisen.
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to let you know, we'd spent money and be prepared for what was on a petition that didn't really occur. That's all I wanted to clarify.
Yes, that was what I was trying to clarify also. Thanks, Fred.
And for what it's worth, we're running out of deficit right now by doing that. Mrs. Quirk, did you have anything else that you wanted to ask about? Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent right now? All right, we're going to move into committee reports. We'll start with Erica. Do you have anything on the policy committee or not?
I do.
I thought so.
Excuse me if I'm not looking because I'm reading. Usually I don't have that much to read. So the policy committee met September 17th. A discussion of policy 8451, Control of Communicable Disease, was had by the committee. Working with the Department of Health, it became understood that the district must have in our own policy, a medical note is required of any staff member who is exposed to COVID-19 or exhibiting symptoms and is therefore required to isolate awaiting test results. And any staff member who tests positive for COVID-19 must quarantine before returning to work. We didn't put in dates in case the quarantine period changes. Currently, there is a policy and regulation for students, policy 5200, but for the staff, medical notes are only mentioned in the EAN contract on page 25 as it states, which I won't read to you. Similar, although more detailed language is in the new custodial contract with the certificate requested by the business administrator. What is on for the first reading tonight encompasses all employees and requires in the case of a communicable disease, that a note be provided immediately, not within five days. Secondly, with the Oval work nearing completion, the committee has also had a discussion of policy 7480, motor vehicles on school property. In the revised policy on the agenda tonight for first reading, the board prohibits the use or presence of all vehicles for any purpose on any part of school property other than areas established for driving or parking, except as permitted by the superintendent or designee for board-approved events, board-approved vehicles or emergency vehicles. The next meeting of policy will be held October 21st, 2020. And I wanted to thank Mr. Scolera and Mr. Riley for making sure that this policy went into first reading tonight.
Good job, Erica, good job, Policy Committee. Usually, like you say, there's not too much going on, but it's been a busy time for you and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin, can we have Academic Committee, please?
Yes, Mr. President. The Academic Committee met on September 17th. We discussed the following topics. A staff directory has been added to the district website to assist parents in accessing contact information for administrators and teachers. Dr. Shojah, Dr. Riley and Ms. Michau presented draft curricula for library media, English as a second language and career and technology education. The curricula will be formally adopted next fall after any and all feedback from the draft is considered. We continue to add curricula to the district website for public access. We hope to have all curriculum documents up this fall. Virtual learning is off to a strong start. Teachers are providing live instruction daily on a set schedule to enhance consistency. Elementary schools will be holding back-to-school nights until September 21st through the 23rd. Principals will be sharing specific schedules. The middle and high school will be providing a View at Your Own Pace back-to-school night open house program with pre-recorded teacher screencasts and directions on how to contact teachers with specific questions. There is a resolution to receive the Digital Divide Grant in the amount of $200,000 on tonight's agenda. Dr. Glazer highlighted the patch rankings, including Washington, Bradcliff and Spring Garden Schools. According to their criteria, are all in the top percent of schools in the state. SAT will be offered in-person to NHS seniors first in October, hopefully if it's, you know, still on. We are also starting an SAT prep course at NHS virtually. Dr. Glazer reviewed a request by Liquid Church to use the facilities. Academic Committee discussed the emergency childcare being offered to parents who have exhausted all possible care options. We currently have 18 students enrolled. Dr. Glazer discussed spectators and facilities regarding the athletic program. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Dancheck-Martin. Mr. Carnesella, can I have your report on administration, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay. So the Administrative Committee met on September 15th. We, myself, Fred Scolera, Mr. Riley, Dr. Glazer and Ken Bagna were in attendance. I reported on the long-range facilities, walked through with the Cowarrabino architects, including the initial plans for Yanaco Secure Entrance. We will, long-range facilities will be having another meeting. We're just waiting for some additional information with regard to the secure entrance at Yanaco from one of the architects. Once that's provided, we'll be setting up another meeting. So hopefully, when we get back to our October meeting, we'll have a little bit more information about the progress that we're making with Yanaco Secure Entrance. Dr. Glazer provided an update on the progress being made on the TERF project, which Mr. Perigi had stated that we were on track and being done for the end of this month. And if anyone, I'm sure everyone's probably driven past the Oval, it looks beyond amazing. end of this month. And if anyone, I'm sure everyone's probably driven past the Oval. It looks beyond amazing. Um, we also, uh, share planning information for the upcoming fall athletic season, including communication to the community regarding the health and safety guidelines. Uh, pre-sale tickets for spectators. Uh, capacity is currently still limited based on the NJSIAA guidelines and the governor's executive order to five hundred persons. Uh, Dr. Glazer reviewed the emergency childcare opening and participation, which we also discussed, uh, earlier in this meeting. Uh, Dr. Glazer discussed plans for reopening the buildings to staff and students in October when the heat index is no longer a factor in ventilation. Uh, Trusty Riley initiated a conversation regarding the preparedness of all seven buildings for the cold as we move into fall and winter and asked that Mr. Perigi prepare an overview for the whole board, not only the finance and facilities committee. Uh, Mr. Bagna detailed the first days of virtual learning, communication sent to parents on September ninth regarding devices and connectivity. Dr. Glazer reported that twenty tents have arrived to facilitate outdoor classroom space and meals when we return. Uh, she also shared that the Rotary New Teacher Dinner will be held Wednesday, September thirtieth, using the tents. Mr. Bagna shared the training held for administrators by Grief Speaks and our ongoing work in meeting the social emotional needs of students and staff. Mr. Bagna also shared the, uh, convening of the DEAC Committee, District Evaluation Advisory Committee for the twenty-twenty-one school year. The first meeting will be held on Thursday, September twenty-fourth at five-thirty, uh, and that'll be done virtually. Dr. Glazer shared a new program called Hipster to streamline the hip process. Training for staff was held on Friday, September eighteenth. Dr. Glazer detailed the new NJ Educators Health Plan, uh, Health Plan, the NJEHP. On July first, twenty-twenty, Governor Murphy signed into law chapter forty-four of New Jersey Public Law, twenty-twenty, which impacts health insurance for school employees. New hires to the district on or after seven-one twenty-twenty. The districts are required to enroll. All employees will have the opportunity to learn about this new benefit plan. Next meeting for the finance, um, next meeting that, I don't know what meeting we're scheduled for, but it'll be announced for our next admin meeting.
Good job, Sal. Mr. Ferraro.
Yes, Mr. President. The, uh, Finance Committee met on September seventeenth. Uh, Carly Johnson presented to the committee the Gizmo's eBooks for Science Grade Six through Twelve Program. Um, Ian Vemister and Jess Sholows presented to the committee on the Schoology platform. Helen Doyle Moreno and April Vidialo presented on the Special Ed Department, how they've implemented various services and testing with our Special Ed students. Uh, this was presented by various CSD staff along with Ms. Vidialo, Mrs. Doyle Moreno. Uh, the committee asked the Special Ed Department to present at the, at the board level in the near future and, and committed to having the Special Ed Department present to committee, uh, in each committee frequently moving forward to increase communications. Uh, Mr. DePisa updated the board on the auditorium claim, the IRS notification, the Chromebook purchase through the digital divide grant, warehouse inventory, various equipment needs and purchases for the maintenance department, requests from Mayor Tucci to meet regarding holiday festival. Uh, Mr. DePisa also discussed the John, John Walker Middle School clock to be repaired and cleaned. The payment to Musco and Decoder for, which are on the agenda tonight for approval and the credit on the shipping from the MF Athletic due, due, which was due to the delay in the delivery of the tents to the district. Uh, the committee also discussed the potential opportunity for volunteers to possibly paint and rehab the bleachers at the, at the, uh, at the Oval along with the fence. Dr. Glazer discussed the athletic coaches and fall season along with the request from Liquid Church for the use of the John Walker Middle School. Uh, Mr. Perigi discussed the update on the Oval Project Turf logo, the schedule to be completed on time. Uh, the quotation for the needlepoint bipolar ionization for the middle school. Uh, we also discussed the, uh, the trailers, uh, being completed at Washington School and the air test that came back negative for mold. Uh, the emergency daycare is underway at Washington School and the maintenance and custodial staff assist daily would set up a breakdown of the program. Our next meeting is, uh, scheduled, uh, not, we don't have a date yet, but it'll be prior to our October meeting.
Good job, Mr. Ferraro. Thank you very much. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on resolutions only. Our Board Regulation Number One sixty-seven allows twenty minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions at this time? Thank you. Um, Mrs. Dancheck, I'll take your academic resolutions, please.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move academic resolutions, one and two as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Miss Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Carnesella, we'll take your administration resolution, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is usually the time in a meeting where I lose connectivity. So I'd like to move administration resolutions, one and two as written.
One second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Miss Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Carnesella. Mr. Ferraro, you take finance resolutions, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I move finance resolutions, one through fifteen as written.
I need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mrs. Quirk, will you take personnel, please?
Yes, um, Mr. President, I move personnel resolutions, one and two as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Miss Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mrs. Darrow, will you take, um, policy resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. Kazinsky. I put forward policy resolution one as written with both policies.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro? Mr. Ferraro? Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Miss Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes, thank you. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow thirty minutes by, for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes. We ask you to try and stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the, the, uh, board. Does anyone have any questions at this time? Is there any old business to come before the board?
Is there one? One question in the chat earlier.
Okay, I'm sorry Ian, say it again.
Uh, there is one question from the chat, uh, from the beginning of the meeting. Laura Del Tufo. If you saw that question? I don't know if you, the question was, what are the planned dates to start returning elementary school students? That were being discussed at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, I think, I think we've covered that point. Um.
Hi, this is Laura Del Tufo. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Wonderful. My, my, um, actually, if you mind, I'd like to start first, um, with addressing some of the, I think, confusion with the petition and the emergency childcare. Um, having written the petition, I can certainly, um, state that, uh, there seems to be misconception of the content of that petition. That in no way was related to requesting the specific emergency childcare that was offered. Um, while we absolutely appreciate it, my son's enrolled, he enjoys it. Um, the original petition was for the students to be in school more than two half days with childcare after school. Um, that was the petition with the two hundred signatures. So I think it's important that that was clarified. We have also started a new petition, um, and just in the last three days, sorry, I have a dog. Um, just in the last three days, we already have a hundred twenty-five signatures of parents who are stating that the virtual model is not working for their children. So while Dr. Glazer mentioned that there has been a lot of positive feedback, I think it's important that the voice of those parents who are not having a positive experience for their child be heard. So, having said that, that's why I have the question about the specific dates for return to school. Um, now I know elementary is being considered after, um, the K pre-K, uh, special education. But what dates are you looking at for elementary?
First, first of all, I, I appreciate your input. Secondly, it's rather difficult to hear everything you're saying with, with the noise in the background, but I think you're looking for some type of us. And I appreciate that. Um, as you know, most important to us is the, is the health and welfare of our children. But aside from that, I think Dr. Glazer probably has a statement that she would like to say.
Um, all, all I really can tell you is that, um, we, we care about every single child. Every child learns in a different way, right? Every child's learning style and learning difference is individual. And, you know, we, we certainly want to make this successful for everyone. However, as we've said from day one, virtual learning is not going to meet the needs of all forty-two hundred of our students. We are, we are doing the, not just the very best we can. I'm gonna tell you that our teachers have gone above and beyond or are doing yeoman's work to make sure that every child, um, is seen and heard. And that's, that's saying quite a bit in virtual learning. Um, while we know it's not for everyone, we, we've really, um, endeavored mightily to make sure that it is the best possible learning environment and learning situation for, um, our students. As far as a, a date to return, that March fifteenth day for the youngest students was set because it's after the, um, the already calendared Professional Learning Day and the closure day for Columbus Day. Um, those children, many of them have never been to school. We need to.
Just one second. I think you said the date wrong. I think you're looking at October fifteenth.
Yes, what did I say?
You said March.
Oh, no, I probably still have.
I know, just wanted to.
No, I don't want anybody to think March, absolutely.
Just wanted to clarify it.
No, you're absolutely, October, thank you. Um, so those students need to be able to transition into classrooms, figure out a routine, participate in the emergency drills, understand the expectations, um, for health and safety. And then immediately following, we'll start by, again, by grade level span to bring the other elementary level children in. I'm not expecting it to take weeks or even months, if that's what the question is, but there is not a specific date. We'll be reinstating our task sport, task forces, there, he's got it out, task forces, um, at the end of September. And I think that, um, the same way that we planned to come together for September, we will plan to come together for October. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Mr. Del Tufo.
Thank you. The date was helpful to know that it won't be weeks or months. Are there any ventilation issues that remain that have yet to be fixed?
So again, the reason that we're out, our ventilation and, um, issues were related to the high heat index. So as the temperatures go down into the fall, those considerations are not an issue. I don't have to exclude classrooms because of air conditioning or because there's not an additional window to open for air capacity. That doesn't mean that there aren't issues, mechanical issues in the buildings. And those are the things that we need to look at as we move into the winter, but they won't keep us from, um, coming in October.
Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Del Tufo?
Yes, and, you know, we, of course, we're going to, to ask for what we were back in, um, the summertime, that when the children return to school, uh, would there still be the consideration of the aftercare at each school?
If, if it were able to happen, it would have to be at the individual schools. Um, because as we start back in October, those children are all gonna be in their own elementary school. So we wouldn't be able to continue, um, for long with what we're doing on an emergency basis at Washington School. And again, that'll have to be part of a larger discussion. But yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any old business to come before the board at this time? Any new business to come before the board? If not, I will say goodnight. Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Close.
Yeah, I'm looking, got it. I was waiting for Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riley is seconded by First Claire, I believe.
DeMayo.
No, DeMayo, either one.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.